Door.
He'll call this meeting to order the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors. Roll call, please.
Layland.
Here.
Schwartz, Treoka.
Here.
White.
Here.
Little.
Here. Please join us. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Agenda received as proposal amended.
I'll move. Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number two is the canvas.
Oh, I didn't have, yeah. Go ahead.
I think it's my second.
I think second, yeah.
Oh, God. You need a crayon?
You got it.
To the numbers.
Gotcha.
Ward one, precinct one?
Gotcha.
One one, one of the one ones.
Got it.
Roll them out.
I got Hart. You got that one at two oh seven?
Yep.
Okay, two oh seven, six.
Makes it easier to find.
Fifty-nine, seventy-two, zero.
Yeah, rather than sometimes a lot of numbers.
Suzie Hines is forty-six.
Yeah.
Sixteen, thirty-seven, forty-four, thirty-one, seventeen, zero. Lionel Schmidt, seventy-nine, forty-two, seventy-six, seventy-five, zero.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Looking for one, two.
So, Ward one, precinct one, we're good. So, okay. Jim Skane, twenty-seven.
Been doing it for fifteen years then.
Jim Brown, eighty-four.
I, uh, I'm texting Chris.
Yes.
Anybody knows me more?
We had Dana was willing to.
Okay, is Chris coming?
Nate Didier, one five oh, one fifty.
Yes.
Okay.
Bean, Bean Blossom, seven, one right in.
Okay.
Benjamin McAllister, eight, oh, Chris Robinson.
He's getting old like.
Chris Robinson, seven.
Right.
Then McAllister, eight.
Dana, why don't you come on up and you can work with Grant?
Suzie Hines.
Okay, we'll need one more person then, so. We had Jane's over there.
Suzie, two twenty, one eighty-one, two twenty-seven, two twenty-five, two eleven.
Okay, we're looking at Hart.
Yep.
One sixty-three, seven, one twenty-seven, fifty-seven, one thirty-eight, thirty-three, forty, forty-one, thirty-five, twenty-three.
Mike McCarter, four, zero.
Lionel Schmidt is fifty-four, thirty-six, sixty, forty, zero, ninety, one, ninety-six, one. One three.
We have a bunch of precincts here.
Lionel Schmidt, two, one, one, four, two. Ellie Plague, two, or zero, two zeros, I was gonna say right in.
First one, Barclays.
Appleby, zero, zero.
Yep.
Alicia Jensen, zero, zero.
I'm gonna read you the numbers that I see. There's a hat.
Teresa Meyer, fifty-two, zero.
Okay.
Denver, four, one.
Three, seventy-nine, thirty-three, zero.
Yep.
Fifty, thirty-five, fifty-one, fifty-four, zero, ninety-nine, one, one oh two, zero.
Your time, yes, with a paper flip and everything.
Looking for one, four.
Can you hold it down a little bit? Hey, shares, one forty-two.
Oh, you meant it.
One thirty-two.
One four.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm just doing votes. He's older than that. And then.
Ward council.
Precinct two. Yes.
One forty-two, one thirty-two, you said?
One hundred, one sixty-nine, seven.
Council. Seventy-eight, thirteen.
One twenty-four, sixty-seven, ninety-two, sixty-two, ninety-seven, one, two, sixty-seven. Eighty-two, three, one sixty-one, two.
Skane, thirty-four.
Going one ten, five.
Two, three, three, two.
Five, six.
Piper, two forty-seven, two seventeen, one ninety-nine.
Four, yes.
Hines, three fifty-three, two seventy-six, three six zero, three seven eight, two seven four, two twenty.
Okay, yes.
Is that large for?
Good, there's that stuff.
Okay, we're looking for Hart.
Got it.
At one sixty-two.
Eight.
Eight, one twenty-six, seventy-one, zero, thirty-nine, one, fifty-one, ninety-three, seventy-seven, one.
We'll challenge him.
Fifty-seven, two, one seventy-five, one.
Yep, District five.
Looking for one, six.
They do that, yeah, everybody gets a pile, so we're good with this, other than we'll have to sign.
Ten signs already done early.
Ward one, precinct three.
Skane, twenty-one. Two eighty-six, two eleven, two.
Yep. Last first.
Piper, two thirty-six, one fifty-eight, one oh seven, two.
Yes.
Hines, twenty-three, one seven three, three twelve, fifty-eight, two sixteen, thirty-seven, twenty-two.
One ninety-two, one thirty-seven, zero, two, 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 two oh one, ninety-six, one fifty-three, one eighty-six, two, seventy-nine, five.
Yeah.
Question.
Okay.
We got tied up.
Yes, or no?
We had a meeting where you.
Question, E text.
Unless that.
Quinton Hart.
Precinct one.
Hey, Jim Skane.
Really.
Four is the big number.
Quinn Hardaway.
One fifty, yep, two, one oh six, nine five, zero. Eleven thirty-nine, one, twenty-two, seven, forty-five, eighty-two, fifty-four, and zero, school district, four one, zero, one forty-five, one.
Seven of town, huh?
So. Two, two.
So now we're in, uh, Big.
I can't believe Alton Street is one thirty, and so I see a chance of their name by the hat.
The board's in council, large.
That's seven, three, six. Ninety-five.
Oh, no.
We do that today.
Sixty-four, thirty-six, zero, seventy-seven, zero, forty-nine, one, forty-six, thirty-nine, zero, eighty-four, zero, eighty-seven, zero.
Ward two, precinct two, two three.
Okay, I'm ready. Skane, fifteen, two fifty, two twenty-three, two.
Yes.
One eighty-one, one forty-one, thirty-two, two. Thirty-nine, two twenty-eight, three.
Yes.
Two fifty-nine, one eighty-five, two forty-one, two twenty-seven, two eighty, one thirty-nine, fifteen.
One oh two, forty-three, zero.
Carter, zero.
One twenty-two.
Yes.
Sixty-four, forty-five, seventy-three, fifty-four, one, one twenty, one, one twenty-one.
Yep, one, zero.
Two four.
I wonder if that's because I don't know people, so they don't vote.
Don't have to vote for anyone else.
Because once you're there.
Could have voted for, could have been on the ballot with either offices, and people could have voted for something else on the ballot.
Forty-two, five.
This is not the only precinct.
Ward two, precinct three.
It's not the only. One oh eight, two, two twenty-three, one fifty, sixty-one, one twenty-four, eighty-five, three.
Skane, thirty-one.
Seventy-one.
Or ninety-nine.
Two, two, nine, and five.
Three eighty-six, three eleven, two twenty-two, three.
Yes.
Or twenty-three, or ninety-three, four.
Yes.
Or eighty-three, three twenty-nine, four, two, four oh eight, two fifty-five, eleven.
Yes.
Running from forty-six, eight.
Corner of Black Hawk County.
Twenty-nine, thirteen, thirty-four, seven, four, three.
Yes.
And.
Knight, fifty-seven, one one.
Sixty-four, zero, one forty-one, three, eighty-two, forty-two, eighty-two, sixty-five, three, one forty-one, two, one forty-eight, two.
Slow turnout, it's amazing, all the work.
Two, six.
We, in the old days.
Yeah, me too.
Precinct outside Black Hawk County within that precinct. But they changed the law so that everybody votes in their own county, and you just.
Ward three, precinct one.
By whatever.
Two thirty-five, eighteen.
Skane.
All right, yes. One fifty-seven, and one twenty-three, zero.
Yep.
Two twenty-one, one.
Two twenty-six, one seventy.
Fifty-five.
One twenty-eight.
Fifty-five, one thirty-three, ninety-seven, six.
Three zero six, four one, two seven one.
Two, three, six, four.
Yes.
On the ballot. Three, one.
That's a rural precinct, all they would have had on the ballot was schools. So, hopefully nobody showed up from that.
I'm gonna see. He'll be disappointed, yeah.
Okay. Looking for one thirty-two.
Ward three, precinct two.
One oh three, fifty-two, one, sixteen, twelve.
Fourteen.
Sixteen, two, zero.
Three zero seven, two nine, two zero nine, zero.
Yes.
Watson, one.
Four three zero, three three nine.
Three, two.
Five, four, one, two.
Three, right.
Six, seventeen.
Yes.
Three, right, and six, the vote could be. Um, Board of Directors, at large, McCarter, six. Uh, Board of Directors.
Sixty-nine, seven.
Lair, six. Six, Lair.
Got it, yep.
One forty-eight, forty-four, zero, sixty-five, forty-eight, anyone, one nineteen, zero.
Ward three, precinct three.
Okay.
Then.
Hey, I'm ready for that. Four, ninety-eight, ninety-two.
Two.
Eighty-nine, fifty-three, forty-three, zero.
Yes.
One zero seven, nine one, one thirteen, six seven, one zero one. Yes.
Um, yep. Board of Directors, at large, Featherstone, one, two, three, Ball, one, two, nine.
I'm on the top.
Fourteen, right.
Yes, it is.
Top one, right.
Chris, huh?
Question, I'm, yeah. Yes, aye, no, one. Public measure, E, yes, four.
I saw when you see the mayors and the different elections go, you just never know, something can.
All right.
Four, one, right?
Four, one.
Okay, thirty-five, four zero eight, two thirty-nine, zero.
Yes.
Two zero one, one eight six, two.
Yes.
Three zero two, two six three, forty-three, three.
Yes.
Three five zero, five seven, three six four, three one six, two seven seven, two three one, one six.
Yes.
Should be in city rate. The Board of Directors, at large, Featherstone, one, Ball, one. Yeah, she, she ran against the old mayor that she was, uh.
She runs all the time.
Shimmel, one.
Ward four, precinct two.
Twenty-three, Chavez, four, Mills, fifteen.
Yes.
Seventeen, one nineteen, eighty-five, one.
Nine, twenty-six.
One zero seven, six four, four seven, zero.
Yes.
Nard, twenty-nine, one right.
One, one.
Yes.
One fifteen, eighty-six, one twenty-one, one thirty-one, ninety-one, seventy-three, twenty.
Yes.
Did it have enough room? Name was too long?
Yeah, Christmas is coming.
Yeah, he said he was looking.
This is not gonna.
Remember the mic. Remember.
He was here until noon with that captain talking. One eighteen, one D, one twenty-five.
He said, we forget, we have audio.
Ward four, precinct three.
Okay, four, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, zero. Twenty-two, twenty-five, nine, zero. Thirty-one, sixteen, thirty, zero. Yes. Thirty-seven, twenty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-three, twenty-three, eighteen, zero.
Yes.
One eight.
One oh, yeah, you tell me.
Yes.
I guess they don't have smokes. Okay.
I'm Catholic.
Um, that's one forty-seven, it's right in.
Ward five, precinct one.
Go.
All right.
Twenty-three, three six nine, two four two, three.
Yes.
Two fifty-three, one seven, zero, one seven, zero.
No, one five.
Forty-three, two four five, three thirty-six, three twenty-six.
Mark, tell me.
One, two, two eight, ten.
Yeah.
Is there a runoff rail? Why would you put that on the back? No, they don't have a runoff in another division.
Want to do a seat calls.
Oh, yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to set it up.
Runoff provision for a primary provision.
I know, that's what the results, like they don't, that's how that goes.
Of course. Or you can just, I believe it's most votes wins.
There's one person.
If you don't choose anything, that's what it is.
Jesus, no, these bloody in Black Hawk County, because the primary and just want to see balls to do the runoff.
Really? Oh, okay.
Okay, now we're on Evansdale, Ward one.
Ward five, precinct two.
So, Beatty, one, two, eight.
Two eighty-seven, one eighty-nine, zero.
Lair, one oh seven.
One fifty-six, one fifty-eight, one fifty-three, zero. Two seventy-two, two twenty-five, two sixty-eight, two five two, two fourteen, one forty-eight, sixteen.
Yes.
One oh nine.
Eight, right.
You're right.
I was thinking, like, what are you gonna reach for, two, it's one, my gesture was like, okay, now what did you mean? You might not get ya.
Three, fifty-seven, one right. Ardeni, one eighty-nine.
Kind of have a positive outlook.
Yep, yep.
Even if it doesn't work.
Oh, yeah, hopefully you won't feel bad staying when you pass, if that's gonna happen.
All right.
Okay.
Five, three.
Oh, Bean Blossom's the mayor.
Eighteen, three six four, three zero nine, zero.
Bean Blossom's the mayor of.
Yes.
Two forty-four, one nine, zero, two seventeen.
Okay, Ward, yes.
Three ninety-eight, three eighty-nine, three seventy-three, three four four, three three zero, two one.
Thick.
Seven, Beatty, three eighty-two, one right in.
I'm in a good place.
Four, Ward. No, two, twenty, right in.
Tom McGowan. All right.
But it's always.
Okay, I'm sorry, I put the downs for nature.
Ooh, that was hard work.
We are, we didn't find any mistakes.
You get her, Dana?
Everything's good. Thank you.
One oh one, Mills, two two two, Mcrina, one four. Three, right. Ardeni, three eight seven.
Also, this was.
I thought I had you on the ropes, that would have made it worse, too.
Oh, my gosh, that would have been terrible, she had to count every vote.
We'd be here three days.
You'd have to lay a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar bond down.
No, this is much better.
So, Downs, Dale, Ward three. Us, six oh, Beatty, one, I, one. OV, twenty-two, Dawson, forty-eight, Wilson, forty. One hundred, even. And. With your two. Three, one, one hundred, even, one, no, fifty, sixty, seventy, right.
Yeah.
Smith, ninety-one, Chavez, forty-one, Mills, eighty-nine. Becky Smith. Eight, one right. Ardeni, one sixty-nine, one right.
Not at all.
Pardon me?
So, are you a mouse? Yeah.
Yeah, um, I will. Are you sure you haven't had time with it? We got two-hundred-and-thirty-seven votes for Mayor. It's still a tie, but didn't we have to draw names for?
I didn't even run.
Don't worry, it's gonna be great.
Yeah, but also Mickey Mouse.
Okay. Why, yeah, those guys, you know, why do you even vote if you're gonna do that? Vic, forty-six, E, right in. McGowan, forty-eight, Knight, forty-six, these, forty-six. Seven, right. What was it, Tomy? Tomy votes to Tomy down there. You got two or three, wasn't it? It wasn't very many.
Not very many.
Marquart, nine. Downs, seven.
Nothing we'd like better.
No votes for.
I've been practicing.
Yeah, you get to work.
You got a crayon? Thirty-four, Mcrina, eight. Yeah.
It's not the top line, that's designated.
There you go.
Yes, designated.
One, two, Yellow Gill, Box, and just.
Oh, good, you can't read his anyway, so.
List, it's here.
I need to shorten mine, then, obviously. Too many.
Jefford is so.
Yeah.
They were saying where that one goes.
Becker, one five two.
Oh.
Hundred-and-fourteen, no, hundred-and-nineteen.
That one goes with this one right here.
This is this one, yeah.
One sixty-five, E, right in. Even, thirty-five, Thompson, five.
Second page there, Linda.
Dan, you got your crayon over there?
Yeah.
Nine.
Tom and I both are chewing on them.
Seven, Bishop, twenty-one, Solomon, four, Wright, thirty-two.
We send them, yeah, to all the candidates.
Covington, forty-one, Claybrook, thirty-eight, Conley, forty-six, Masteller, forty-nine, Glassby, twenty. Rensson, four. Ain, five, Scott, four, Shimmel, four. Schmidt, ninety-three, Chavez, twenty-seven.
You're sloppy with your English, so I love it, because I just keep on, yeah, it's just like, you can't read mine, that's okay. You just shortened yours, yeah.
I worked at a power super company, yes, I had a lot of stuff.
Have you seen? I didn't realize that we also had.
Yeah, well, what I used to write, and I, yeah, you could at least read it.
Okay.
No, that's fine, just to drop it like that's just fine.
I forget that second page on.
A couple of two pages.
Skane, forty-eight, Green, four six six, Brown, four hundred, even, or right in. Piper, three six five, Sires, two eight three, Idi, two four two, one right in. Rogers, eighty-four, DeGore, one forty-nine.
How many certificates were there?
Harding, twenty-three, Perryman, six.
Don't have an idea.
Shares, fifteen.
You're not kind of, I was just kidding.
Schainer, five.
A bunch.
Hilton, three, Reichen, sixteen, Smith, fifteen, precinct one. Going, seven, Roquette, twelve, twelve, one D, five, Wertz, one.
I get.
There's no recalc, huh? Nope. One D, six, Parkers.
Not with this board.
Patrick, twelve, Shellhorn, eight, Alice. Are they still candidates?
You'd have to prove it, yeah.
Bass, nine, two, right. Us, thirteen, eighty, thirty-seven, four, one, right in.
You know they're.
Lair, ten, Bean, two. OV, zero, Dawson, four, Dawson, one, zero, four.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, Nichols, four oh, Nolan, twenty, one right in. Tomy, four, Minor, two, one right in. Becker, five, V, four, right in. Ross, six, Russell, six. Engel, six, Lawson, six. Bean Blossom, seven. You have one right in. You're right, one right in for Hudson, Kelsey, and Rorler. And Bean Blossom, seven. Janesville, Robinson, six, McAllister, four.
They're still going through the books over there.
Robinson, four, McAllister, six.
We're done.
I'm getting a punchy head.
Doesn't work, then.
Meetings adjourned.
Zero, Thompson, thirteen.
So, maybe we can help.
Etrick, two, Ro, eleven, shares, three, Mott, seven, Bishop, zero, Solomon, seven, Wright, three. Hickman, five, yes.
Who wants me to jar for the?
We voted.
You can go right ahead, Chair.
No, I know both of them, so I'm going to.
Three, East.
Dan?
Sure.
Okay.
This will be interesting.
We'll put it on his shoulders.
Yep, sounds good.
Hart, five, one, for.
Still mayor.
Boson, four, four, five, Smith, two, one, three.
Is that it, yeah?
Ryder.
I know I'm both.
The chair normally would.
One, six, oh, two, right in. Name is seventy-nine, two, right in.
I get the office with no windows, and I gotta break the tie.
That's because we're new.
You know, they have those pit doors.
Look like a window lookout.
Yep.
Austin, four, six, one, Cully, three.
Well, even if.
Dan tried to go out there one day, so he took it down. Twenty-three, twenty-eight.
Well, even if I get to a point where I, I'm not gonna.
Schumacher, one, Andrew Gas.
Craig liked it back there.
Yeah.
Good office.
Zero. I can hear people coming.
That's true.
Marquart, two twenty-five, Downs, twenty-three, Devor. Be the last one to die. Everybody, four.
They stop at Chris's.
I'm gonna go, lady.
Large, zero. Featherstone, seven, Ball, seven.
Yeah?
G, eight, Journal, seven.
More, okay, no, we're not done.
Hoffman, three.
No, we made it.
Seven, Clayberg, nine, Donley, fourteen, Russell, eleven, Glassby, four. Rensson, six, Ain, six. Scott, six, Shimmel, six. Steenhouse, zero.
It doesn't have to be the chair, does it?
Peody and Perk, zero.
You've.
Fish, zero.
I'll let Dan do it, things.
Dean Van Dale, zero. Three, five, seven.
Any difference?
Chavez, one eight nine, Mills, three, three nine.
No, it's not like.
Mcrina, three, three, three.
Yeah.
Nine, right in. Flynn, one eight eight, one right.
I'd rather one of them be mad at him than me.
Yeah.
For all five of us, they could throw them back in half, and all five of us could draw three out of it. Read it to a B.
Good.
Zero.
Sounds like a horn.
Four, one, zero. Dragger, zero, Meyer, fifty-seven. McLaughlin, two seventy-one, six, right in. Ardeni, one forty-four, three, right in.
Oh, you can.
Question BK, sixteen, yes, two, no.
I thought we were done.
Question BW, two, yes.
Where it's going wrong, ring around. There's gotta be an easier way than all this.
They haven't signed yet.
No votes. Public measure B, no vote.
Nope. Nobody can read it.
Question B.
Do you understand?
That does a lot of good usually for us.
Probably not, because then somebody could do all of them.
Oh, there are some more.
Everybody else done, just waiting for us?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I got a couple of announcements.
James don't want to count.
Let's talk, Grant.
Two, two, two.
Three, two, no, three, four.
Carry this, seven. Okay, um, there were three provisional ballots that were rejected and not counted. Also, uh, we are now verifying that there was a tie vote in the race for Oak Run Heights Mayor.
That's right.
And so, the law provides that the board will draw lots for the winner. Faces of paper of the same size put in a receptacle. Here's a receptacle, old.
Yeah.
Choose your receptacle.
And just showing that they're both names, identical writing, identical size of paper.
You go, Dan?
All right.
Give it up to her.
Karen, would you like to explain, um, how the second canvas is going to work?
Yes. So, we have a second canvas Tuesday, the nineteenth, and we can do that at the regularly scheduled board meeting. Um, we have a second canvas because we have Hawke County, School District, um, or Community College, sorry, Dunford End School District and Union School District that are in multiple counties. So, we're the control county for those three, meaning that today we all sort of find our own final results, and next Tuesday, now, we do the total, uh, school district, so that will be next Tuesday.
Thank you. So, all that we need now is...
Okay. So, we drew out the hat, the name was Kristi Lundee. And, uh, Resolution A is a resolution to certify the outcome of the votes cast in the city's school election for Black Hawk County held Tuesday, November the fifth, two thousand nineteen, in accordance with the Iowa Code, uh, fifty-point-two-four. Grant, is there anything else you need to add?
Sorry, Doc.
I don't believe so.
Okay, with that, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move.
Second. Okay. Roll call when you're ready.
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yeah.
Little?
Yes.
And scenes, that's all we're doing is signing, we could probably adjourn the meeting, is that correct, Grant?
Um, as long as you don't talk about anything that, uh, that's...
Well, let's stay in the meeting here, do we get some of this done? I don't want Dan Apple to jail.
He might be.
Or Dana. And we throw Dana, we'll just...
Throw Dana.
Be one of the comfortable jails.
No.
I really, I really thought I was the one who was gonna be signing those certificates there, but...
Someday you will.
No, thank you.
It's nobody asked.
Short signature. Gets shorter as you go.
Hex, hex, hex.
They would have to take, yes. That's a recount. Lind is pretty fast, too.
Writing a few more letters. Which can read it to save your soul.
I don't really wanna be seen as encouraging or discouraging anything, so if there's a question...